Called the meeting, nine eleven Planning Commission meeting. And if we could stall, stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
Recording in progress.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just, I was talking to Nate. We're adding in line three, which is for public comment, I guess. They wanted us to add that in here and I don't see anybody unless Chad wants to make public comment. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't have any other changes to like the agenda itself, so.
If you're okay, we can kind of start with the new business item. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Do we have to move?
Yeah, do we have to make a move?
Yeah, yep, yep, sorry.
I'll move to adopt.
Okay, we have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion approved? So, new business?
Yeah. So, good evening Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening is we do have a request to vacate some easements. So these easements that are proposed to be in vacated are for lots four and five, block six. This is out in the Northland Heights area. The two lots are off Iris Lane. The intent of this vacation is to vacate the interior lots in between those two lots for the purpose of constructing a future home over those. So part of that request will entail the applicant to file for administrative subdivision, which would combine the two lots into one lot. And then before they can build, they would have to vacate this easement, so that's why this vacation's coming forward to the commission. And this does require a public hearing. The remaining easements for the lot will remain, it's just the two interior easements between the lots. There's no utilities, public or private, that exist. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, should you have them. Otherwise, it'd be a public hearing and then action on the resolution.
The only question that I've got is the usual one when you're vacating an easement, is there any drainage utility issues as far as not utilities, but the drainage issues when you're combining the two?
No, not for this one. Yeah, it's just the standard drainage easement that was dedicated as part of the original plat. So the builder would still have to ensure that they're providing positive drainage around the structure and not creating drainage onto adjacent properties.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak up, say anything? Nope, doesn't look like it. All right, that will close the public hearing. And.
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's any.
So there's a resolution and the resolution, let's see, scroll down here. So we don't have a specified resolution number. That will come when the council takes action, but the resolution is in your packet. So we're gearing towards getting it to next Monday's council, the eighteenth. Yep.
Yeah, there doesn't look like there's any objections to any of these, so I guess, do we have a motion to approve vacating the easement on the described plots? And we have second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Thanks Chad.
Thanks Chad.
All right, next agenda item is a interim use permit. So this interim use permit is for one nineteen College Avenue North. Our code requires rentals within the B one downtown district and the B two highway district to obtain a interim use for allowing a rental. The purpose of that is to slowly transition those areas into the appropriate commercial use. Our code does state that once a block becomes majority commercial, that interim use permits shouldn't be extended or that. Typically what we've done in the past and what's standard is the permit would get renewed for five years. That's what we have drafted in here. So this last one was renewed in two thousand and eighteen and that's why it's coming forward now. This one, being off College Avenue North, we do have a mixture of commercial and rental. Right now, it's basically fifty-fifty. So they have obtained their rental license for the year. So what we would ask is conduct the public hearing and then take action on the interim use permit renewal, which would extend it five years from the date of the council meeting.
Do you want me to open each one? Do we have to go through?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing for the one nineteen College Avenue North. And it doesn't look like there's anybody here to discuss that, so we'll close the public hearing. I have a question. What is the percentage that the city then looks at, like if it's commercial to rental? Like at what point do you guys say?
So it essentially says, so when the majority of the block is a commercial use.
Is that seventy-five percent?
More than fifty.
More than fifty?
Yeah, more than fifty.
Now is that what?
Looks like fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that was fifty-fifty.
Yep, it's fifty-fifty. So, yep. Some of these areas, not this one per se, but another one coming up here, we are seeing some of that conversion happening. So, yep.
I mean, we could ask for both of them, but I'm gonna ask is, was this, is this like the third time that they've done it? Fourth, fifth, sixth?
So I believe this would be the third. I know that they sought that renew in two thousand and eighteen and I think that it initially started in two thousand and thirteen, from my recollection.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I'll make a.
A motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion, adopting the finding of the facts to recommend to the city council to issue an interim permit renewal for five years.
On the College Avenue?
On College Avenue.
College Avenue. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Item C, open the public hearing for First Avenue Northeast.
Yeah, so this one is for one nineteen First Avenue Northeast. This property is owned by Michael Deitz. This is in an area that's zoned to be two highway commercial, so essentially right off Birch Street over near the highway, Highway seventy-five. And this also has a mixture of basically fifty-fifty commercial and rental. All the other rental that's on that block, I believe, are also owned by that same property owner, Deitz. So this would be the same action, five-year renewal. And yeah, public hearing in that, so.
And again, this one appears to be fifty-fifty pretty much?
Yeah, yep. Literally goes every other, commercial rental, commercial rental.
So, and so like if it's the property owner, if they sell it as a commercial, that would start to.
Yeah, so our, yeah, really the goal is to get that as commercial eventually. So, yep, if they sell it and someone wants to convert it, then that's what the zoning really is right now. Yep.
Okay. Well, prematurely, I think, open and close the public hearing, so, sorry. Open it again. Close it. Okay?
Kind of same question, second, third time, Nate, I'm gonna keep asking you this.
Yeah, from my understanding, these are all third.
Third time.
Yeah, at least. I didn't look before that, so I couldn't tell you before that, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll move for finding of the fact, the city council issue an interim permit renewal for five years on one nineteen First Ave Northeast.
Got a second?
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
All right.
Birch Street.
Next one is thirty Birch Street East. Again, this is Michael Deitz that owns this and is requesting a extension of his interim use permit. And again, all these have obtained their annual rental license as well. So seeking a renewal of five years for this interim use permit.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on the interim use permit on Birch Street. No one here, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions on this one? I think you had the same questions, probably another third time.
He kinda told us, right, third time.
Third time.
And this one actually has more rental than it looks like.
Yep.
Yeah, this one is actually the same block as the other one.
Same block, same block.
Yeah, yep, so fifty-fifty.
Mm-hmm. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And finally, fourth one.
All right, so one oh four First Avenue Northwest. Robin Gorbowski is seeking approval for their interim use permit. This one, we are seeing more significant conversion happening, but it's happening on the block over along Ash Street, so that's the section by the post office. That conversion is kind of happening in that area. However, budding this property is actually majority residential and rental to the north and then to the south and then east. So this one is again seeking a five-year renewal for their interim use permit.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing on the First Avenue.
My name's Corey Eller. I have a property adjacent to this one. Maybe it should've came up right away, but you, I mean, five years, the ideal, if you're the property owner, the city can reduce that down to two, three, four years. I dealt with this when I converted the Estates Bed and Breakfast. I was granted a three-year renewal, but there was some good dialogue about, we'll do this for three more years, but in the next three years, we'd like to see you do something else with it. You know, and it's not always, you know, favored by the landowner, but I'm sure glad I did it. I don't know that I would've done it if the city wouldn't have, you know, given me the indication in three years, we'd like to see you something, do something different with this. And this one on First Avenue Northwest, I think, could be a good example of that where Kensington Bank and all the other good stuff is happening over there for kind of repurposing some of those older homes. Now, this is a really small lot, so this probably isn't the right property to lead that effort, but I think as a city, you could maybe just, you know, share with them and maybe Nate, you could just say, here, there was some discussion around the extension, but we would like you to start thinking about other uses other than a residential rental property across from a nicely turning commercial development area. Just a thought.
Okay, is anybody else? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing. Okay.
Yeah, so the ones in the south there, you have your subject property that's there, so just kind of hear what Corey had to say, when are those ones up for?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that offhand, yeah.
Could we possibly find it out?
Yeah, definitely. I'd be happy to and kind of what Corey alluded to, you know, I would say, and I should've mentioned this, that we do always work with these property owners to try to get these conversions happening. You know, that's part of why you're seeing some of these other conversions going on is to try and transition that even before their IUPs are up or whatnot.
Right, and obviously, they can convert it even with the five-year IUP.
Correct, yeah, if they wanted to convert it tomorrow to commercial, then that's perfectly, that's what the zoning permits and what we'd want to see, so, yep.
And just out of curiosity, let's say we put restrictions and let's do a renewal for three years.
Yep.
And at the end of three years, they could reapply and then they could do another three, four, five, up to five years at the end of that three years, right?
Yep, correct, yep.
Well, I mean, that kind of, I kind of thought about that even on the County Road seventy-five ones, wondering, you know, you want to have that commercial of what, you know, is five years the best? But, you know, the one rental to the left here on the paper from the bank, you know, that's right in between now.
Two businesses.
Two businesses, you know, and that, and I guess that, isn't that whole block kind of already bought and purchased? So eventually that'll be switched out once the residential goes out, or how does that work? So isn't?
Which block are you referencing the one?
The one with the bank on it, that whole area there?
Yeah, yep, so on that side of the street, so going from to the west.
Yep.
That's all commercial on the north side, except for one property, which is that one that's.
In yellow.
Right here. This one too, yeah, I guess I'm referencing going this way.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all commercial, except this one, I believe.
But that's rental right now.
Yeah, yep, this one right here, yep.
But the developer does own that rental.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, well, eventually.
Yep, same property owner. I mean, there are intentions to, you know, convert that one and potentially a couple others, it just, you know, hasn't happened quite yet, but.
I guess I'm not opposed to shortening it, at least for this one and then.
Since there's so much other.
Yeah.
Commercial activity going on there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, on that block, it's not the fifty-fifty rule. I mean, we're.
On that block, yeah.
It's to be fair, to be fair to that, this property owner, which we just did, we kind of went fifty-fifty and there was commercial in between them, this one here are all rentals and a residential.
Sure.
I mean, I kind of was thinking.
That's why I said it'd be interesting to see when those other three are coming up for the IUP.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean, if they're all coming up at the same time, or, you know what I mean? And then same thing with those three is you limit those to the two or three years, depending, but that would be good information to.
Well, I mean, I guess we've already voted on those other ones, I feel, based on how we voted on the other one.
And I'm not saying we could vote for this one, but it'd be interesting for those other three eventually to see what those would be too, and if they're all at the same time or the same people, or it'd just be interesting, but.
What street, what is that, those, that street?
Ash, yeah.
If I may, I think only one would be on the interim use permit. Could be probably maybe thirty-three Ash Street. So the one on the corner has a rental license to the south.
Yep.
That was before the, that was grandfathered, so that's been a rental for thirty years. So they only have to do this interim use for, this interim use permit is, was branded after the ordinance was changed to no more rentals.
When was that?
Two thousand, maybe nineteen ninety-six, I think, is when we went to hard and fast onwards. So I think there's only going to be one, so if you go to the south, the corner of Ash and the first.
Yep.
If you go one to the east, that one was converted, recently turned into a rental property.
Okay, so the, yeah, the middle one.
So I agree, I think you're doing the right thing if you can read her that, but there really is, of those three in the purple, I'd say rental, rental, rental. Only one in the middle is dealing on Ash, I think is an interim use. Nate, does that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see it on the.
I seen an Ash Street on there, but it was thirteen.
Yeah, that was a different, yeah, it was thirteen Ash Street East, which is on the other side of College. Yeah, so I mean, I didn't see it at first glance in the spreadsheet that we had, but I could be wrong.
Okay. Just interesting, but yeah.
I would say he's been a rental for two years.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
And the other ones are grandfathered in?
Yeah, the other two.
One on the east to the right and on the bottom, on the left.
Then I, I guess I feel like we should, you know, five years, if that's what you're recommending, I guess I.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that, considering we just, considering we just did and that block has all rentals or residential on that block. That specific block per se. But it's only my opinion, what does it really matter if I get changed elsewhere, up the ladder, so I'm just making a recommendation.
Make a, make a motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve the five-year interim use permit on Ash Street.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion pass.
All righty, so next item, we just need another appointment to the Joint Planning Board. The Joint Planning Board meets as needed, typically one to two meetings a year at seven o'clock, City Hall here. We have four city reps and four township reps. Right now, we have Carmy, Bob, and then John on that, so we just need one more lucky volunteer.
It's real exciting.
We had one meeting, it was great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was.
Anybody want to jump on?
We will have one more meeting coming up.
Ooh.
So, yeah. But it's the same thing that they took action at last time because of dates. We have to, yeah, uh-huh.
Why did we miss a fun date?
So basically, the city of Saint Cloud, their detachment that had to go to the state and then the state had to issue approval prior to us taking action on the resolution. So we had to, basically, we have to wait for Saint Cloud to then send that and then the township okay that, and then that's going to go back to the Joint Planning Board again, same resolution, same everything.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's just, because they can't issue a approval until that has been executed, so, yeah.
Just for the three of you, it's rousing stuff, so.
Yeah.
Once a year, once a year, twice a year.
It's one to two times.
Having been there before, I already know.
Mark, would you like to join, Mark? Well, I would, I would like to nominate Mark.
I'll second that.
Where's the railroad sound coming?
All right, we got.
You're really on an island over there, Mark.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess I care.
Are you good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item G.
All right, so staff's been working with Mark Hiltner, who owns property out in our industrial park off County Road one thirty-three. We've been working with him on a site plan approval for just south of twelve thousand square foot building. We do have in our code that twenty-five percent of the building facing the street consists of specific materials, which are outlined in your packets and in blue there. Specifically, we're looking at that, what would be the east side of the building. So the applicant is proposing essentially a standing seam metal for that side of the building. Right now, we do, you know, one of the acceptable materials is aluminum lap siding or vinyl. We have had discussions on the, you know, quality of that material and the comparison of that. So, you know, it's staff's interpretation that this, you know, would be essentially kind of a enhancement over like a material like aluminum lap siding. We have talked with our building official, who also does concur with that assessment. It's not really, it's not a cost thing, you know, standing seam does cost more than aluminum lap siding and does, from my understanding, hold up better and is more durable of a material. So I wanted to bring this forward for interpretation ruling by the Planning Commission to make sure that that is something that you also concur with, and we do have the developers in that here this evening.
Well, this isn't a public hearing, but you go ahead, Mark.
Yeah.
Oh, it's pretty cut and dried.
Yeah.
The gable end, we're putting, I don't know if you're familiar with standing seam or not, but it's a, like a, it's metal, but you don't see any of the fasteners. It's the same thing they just put on the La Playette in the front. If you saw the front of the La Playette.
Same thing with Bad Habit, correct?
Pardon?
Did Bad Habit do the same thing?
Yep, Bad Habit has one too, yeah. There's, it's not uncommon, it's actually pretty popular. If you look at it there, you can see the difference. That's not a color one. There's black doors, and there it is.
There it is.
Yep, and copper.
Nice.
Other stuff. But the gable end up in the front, they'll have standing seam on. It's not super noticeable because of the color, but when it was black, we were going to go with a couple other colors, it was a little too dominating with. We do have the black, you know, the, we've dressed up all the way around the building also. It's not only the front, we've got little eaves over all the doors, copper on the sides, copper on the back, on all the other sides. It's a nice looking building when I look at it. It's not like, a lot of them are just all steel all the way around and just a little bit of something on the front to meet coat.
Awesome.
I'm assuming it's like rental? Like rentals, this is like to have rentals spaced individual?
We'd like to rent it all to one person, actually.
Oh.
Yeah, idealistically, someone to take the whole building, but we're prepared for three, idealistically, I guess. There's four entrances out the front.
Okay. So the standing seam is just on the gable ends there, not on the, the rest of it going all from the gable down?
The copper is going to be standing seam and the wainscoting around the bottom is going to be standing seam.
Okay, gotcha.
So the wainscoting will be identical to what's above it?
So, this is the.
Pardon, I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, I think the wainscote is like three feet from grade to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's essentially this area that you're seeing.
Basically up to the bottom of the windows all the way around.
But the same material below and above?
Below and above, yeah.
Same color, same material.
Looks like different, oh.
Yes.
So that's going to be copper too?
Standing seam is also a heavier gauge than blue barn steel, like the rest of the building to be covered in. It's. Yeah, no fasteners, it's real clean looking compared to the.
The color of the architectural, is it the same as the other steel in the building that you're thinking, or are you thinking of a different color?
Yeah, yep. That, the color change, the colors are due to interpretation, who likes what, but.
Okay.
No other questions?
Any questions? More questions? Nope, all right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the alternative material for building.
All right, we have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Motion passes. Do you want me to explain all the motion passed approved of?
No, nope, we're just, yeah, nope, that's perfectly fine how the commission outlined that.
And old business, landscape requirements, industrial zone properties.
Yeah, so this just continues the discussion that the Planning Commission has had briefly in regards to landscape requirements. Again, so out in our industrial park, we require X number of trees and X number of shrubs per square feet. You know, specifically when you have substantial buildings, large buildings, you know, that can add up to being quite a number of trees and shrubs. So wanted to just have the discussion with Planning Commission on thoughts. We did, per last meeting, do a little bit of research, not a ton, but tried to look into some of the other area cities and what their requirements are. We did find two communities. We looked at the communities in our area and then a couple of communities outside the area. Sartell is more restrictive than us. They do require more trees and more shrubs per square feet of building. What was kind of surprising is we found like Stock Rapids, I believe Saint Cloud, Way Park. So their criteria was more subjective, there wasn't necessarily like a minimum, you know, one shrub per three hundred and fifty square feet of building in the industrial park. You know, Saint Cloud had strict screening requirements, you know, in terms of separating the industrial parks from residential areas, which is pretty standard, but did not have those minimum shrubs and trees in the industrial park areas. In Stock Rapids, theirs was kind of, well, we expect a landscape plan to be submitted and then we kind of make our best judgment essentially, so it was kind of subjective. Big Lake, they were a little bit more restrictive too, you know, that's one of the communities outside the area that we, we looked at. Saint Augusta also had more subjective language in there tied to just requiring a landscape plan and then staff essentially reviews that administratively and then, you know, makes that, makes that ruling. Cold Spring does not have any minimum trees or shrub requirements either. So those are a couple of examples and, you know, we continue just having some example languages, you know, on what if a, any amendment were to occur, what would amendments look like? These are just discussion purposes. You know, our first one is we talk about where industrial parks, they can go off the site perimeter instead of square feet of building. You know, that would significantly reduce the number of trees and shrubs, maybe two significantly. Option two is essentially taking the total that's required and then dividing it by two to get to the minimum of trees and shrubs. Another option is capping the building size, so anything above a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, we would. we would count the trees and shrubs up to that point, but then stop counting them past that and essentially cap it. Um, another option is we talk about, uh, more of a subjective kind of, uh, option where in industrial parks, they should have deciduous and coniferous trees around the perimeters that border the streets and public right away, along with the front entrance, to kind of give the facade that enhancement. Um, I know there was a little bit of discussion about the importance of, you know, having those trees and shrubs on the sides or in the back where, you know, it's not as visible. So we kind of structured that to be, you know, focusing on the visibility of that. Um, there's definitely benefit for having trees and shrubs out in the industrial park. It's just a matter of what is that, you know, ask that we should be, you know, putting on our industrial park, you know, developers and development. So, you know, what does the planning commission, you know, see as a, you know, good point for?
So, I know the last time we kind of talked about it, it's, you know, we're just, just kind of building up that industrial park right now. So really, it's, you know, how many businesses do we have in there right now?
Well, I can say, um, we have, we have, uh, three, one, two, we have three that are being constructed. Uh, we have four with the Hiltner one.
Yep.
But, um, I would say at least half of the, all those lots out there are either spoken for or under purchase agreement.
And which one's fully going now, Trobex, correct?
Trobex, Gooden, in Granite City Gymnastics.
Building, but I'm saying Trobex is
So.
Done and operating, correct?
Correct.
What do they have planted already?
So, well, the, I'll say that the concern is coming, you know, from a few that are out there and contesting.
Sure.
So there was landscape plans that were put together and, you know, approved as such. Um, and now there's concerns that are being brought forward.
You know, I think the biggest thing is you've got a lot of businesses that are starting to move there. You know, us as a planning commission to the city, it's, what do you want it to look like out there? You know what I mean? Like, yep, that's what you're saying. Right.
I think you have a, you have a minimum requirement. But I think that minimum requirement needs to be subjected to the landscape plan and looking at it. Like we talked about, we wanna make, we wanna make the industrial park to look nice, attractive, to bring in more businesses and to make sure when people drive through it, they say, wow, this is really nice. It's a reflection on the community, it's a reflection on the businesses, what we expect of our businesses and what, you know, people will enjoy this, you know, the community.
Right, and I, I don't disagree with like your last one where it's like, hey, make the, the front look nice, the entrances look nice, like they don't need it in the back. They don't need it, or budding up, but, you know, at least for your, is it number four here, option four where?
Yeah.
Or you kind of go in between option three and four, you go up to a certain amount, but you still want it on the front or the sides, you know, to kind of make, you know, sure, that's, that would be my thought.
And I think, I think if you put, if you put a minimum, a minimum, a minimum requirement.
Correct.
But I still think it's subject to the landscape.
Yep.
You know, plan and being able to look at it and say, the minimum doesn't quite do it, it's just not, it doesn't give us the feel we want. We should have the ability to say, let's add another couple of trees, more shrubs over this.
Well, like I said, if you keep it to the point of where you have a certain square footage that you want, but then you also have language in there that dictates front sides of what you want, I, you know.
You know, the hard thing to do there, it's me, it's, I, I get the, the quantities can get excessive on those big buildings like that. I agree with some type of, you know, front sides, whatever, but me, it's more of, you know, quality versus quantity.
Yeah.
Is there a way of, um, you know, you can plant all these trees in, and I know it says irrigated, now I see that the red on the option number four there down the bottom where it said, has been an irrigated area. But if the trees die, is there any requirements as far as having to replace those or?
Yeah, so that, that's, yeah, that's a great question. So, um, we do have a requirement that, um, within a year, um, that those should be replaced. Um, one issue too that we've had is, um, with one of the projects, um, you know, there, there was, so such a high number of trees and shrubs that were required that there was spacing concerns on actually effectively getting those trees and shrubs to grow because of the lack of, you know, you think on a fifteen acre maybe piece of property that there's plenty of room, but when you add up all the trees and shrubs required, then you get into spacing and it, it is, uh, you know, the quantity maybe tips that where that's affecting the quality of the plantings.
And the type of tree and shrub that you're planting has a big difference too.
Right.
I, personally, I don't think that, I mean, the lots are probably sold, you said, the lots, I mean, to find industrial, to make it that they have trees, I, I mean, I'm in industrial park, Way Park, and there isn't any. And, you know, I put shrubs just cuz I want the building to look nice, but there is no requirement, there's no irrigation. In fact, I don't have any grass, I don't think anywhere to plant a tree. Um, and the trees that are, that are there, that are actually nuisance are being torn down because you can't build with all these trees on there, so that's, that's a different story, but I, I just, I don't know, I feel like it should be very, it should be to the point where you might say for some front facing property, you know, you might have to have it look some shrubs and some deciduous trees, but it maybe should be put to the administrative, station for approval and not have it go through some, so many square feet and it has to have this and you have to have so many trees. I just feel like that's just, I mean, it's an industrial park.
Right.
You're not, you're not getting retail, you're, and people, the people that are going there, um, I mean, what, you're not controlling who the lots are being sold to, you know, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what if it's a, uh, uh, dump site, but I mean, I don't know, or welding shop?
So are you saying more kind of like Sock Rapids where the criteria is subject and determined by staff?
Yeah, I mean, because you're, cuz, cuz then all of a sudden you have something that's not like forward, you know, front facing to, to normal traffic. And what does it matter, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, it, there's two sides of it. You might build up a couple industrial where you want your neighbor to be nice, that, you know, you got a nice, clean industrial neighbor, but there's also historical ones out there that have been out there for a while, right, that don't have all of those things in there yet. Some have gravel, that was the other thing too, I feel like we keep ver- putting variances for gravel. It's like, why do we even have that they have to have asphalt every time we have that in there, but we give a variance for gravel for all of these. It's like, why is that in there? I just, I think we're, we're, we're not Sartell that might be super restrictive or Big Lake. If it's along this, this highway, I think it could be, it should be less restrictive. Way Park doesn't have anything, you know, our nearest neighbor, um, Saint Cloud has, you know, that for screening for residents. So, I just, to try to put some minimum requirements, and then again, like you were saying, to, to, if you do have to have green space or, you know, irrigation, does that become a problem when all of a sudden there's limits on using water, things are gonna die anyway? I don't, that's just my opinion on it, I just.
Is there a max green space requirement?
A max, there's a, a minimum, yeah, there's a minimum, yeah, yep.
What is it?
Um, I think it's twenty percent, um, yeah.
And of what, the whole, the, the property or the?
Yeah, so, give me a second here. Um, yeah, so eighty percent max impervious, um, surfaces, so yeah, twenty percent green space.
In that case, I guess I don't mind the stuff in number three then, that gave the.
Maximum?
Yeah.
Up to a certain maximum, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Square footage?
I mean, cuz trees are not just for screening, they're also for the health of, like, your city, I mean, you don't want a bunch of carbon output that's not being taken back by trees either, so.
Well, there aren't any trees out there though, right now.
No, but the more you put industrial out there, the more output there will be, and if you don't have trees to take some of that back, it's, it can be.
Yeah, I think the discussion is kind of timely in the sense that, you know, we still can get on the front of, you know, a lot of building that's gonna be occurring out there, you know.
I still say like, you go between three and four, like I don't disagree with you, but I think you're right, like with Sock Rapids, criteria is subject and determined by staff too, but at the same point, I don't think you shouldn't have anything out there.
Right.
I think there should be something.
There shouldn't be something.
There should be certain minimums up to, if you're gonna do square footage, or if you're gonna do some of option four, combine both of them. Uh, because again, you, we're just kind of starting it out there and.
But don't you think that could be something that administration, that they?
Well, that's why I said you could have the staff criteria, yeah.
It's a, it's a subjective, you say, here's the minimum, but then there's the subjective.
It shouldn't have to come to planning commissioner every time.
Right, but you look at like, you know, your twenty percent green space, if you have a huge bit of lag like that, you're right, that does get kind of excessive, so. Again, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, three, four, but I'm also not opposed to the criteria is subject and determined by staff as well, depending on what happens. It's kind of like.
And when you, yeah, when you say like, uh, subjective, so staff can determine that, um, planning commission though still kind of sees the value in having, if we're gonna have plantings, have it in the fronts or the areas that are facing streets and things like that.
Public side.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Whoever you want to phrase it, but.
Kind of means there's like a screening, a little bit.
Sort of, yeah, it'd be, I, I just look at it as an enhancement.
Yeah.
You know, you're trying to put, as a business, you're trying to put your best foot forward to the customers who do show up there, even if it's not the public, you've still got.
So you're still saying a minimum?
Yeah, but my favorite place out there is floor to ceiling.
Yeah.
And they don't have any front, they don't have, it's all asphalt, cuz there is no, so I mean, it doesn't matter.
Two trees out there, it'll look nice.
I, I wouldn't care cuz I still go there looking flooring.
But even to your point, you know, even in years in Way Park.
I, I know you're looking.
Right?
I cut down every tree I possibly can around my plant.
What's that?
But, you know, I, I get what you're saying too, but I think.
A little bit, um, so they did seed and sod, but they didn't get their seed and sod to actually grow into recently because of the, they didn't irrigate it.
What about putting trees down the, in the median part? Is there, when you drive into the park?
So we call it a boulevard?
No, you know, isn't there a, like, a mid, a middle part, or is it, is it just a?
With the boulevard on like Westwood Parkway, like?
No, you turn into the park?
Yeah.
Isn't there a section in the middle that's grass? You plant trees on there, Cory?
I don't know if that called for trees, but yes, so.
That would make it look nice right there.
So.
Westwood Parkway was modeled, uh, from the east, I think, or not.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
There are trees in that boulevard.
Yeah.
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 I, I think that would be the intent, is to have some plantings in that on Westwood Parkway in the middle, yeah, once that.
Yeah, I don't hate that, I agree.
I don't hate, you just can't have big deciduous trees that, that don't, cuz you got a semi that turns into.
Yeah, like, what is the, what is the call out for that, you know, we're not talking pines.
For the call.
The.
The plantings.
The plant, the trees.
Um, so I mean, we break it down into twenty-five percent of the trees should be, uh, coniferous.
And.
And the rest is just deciduous.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Or something over.
Of that is to have some trees that have year round vegetation, so you have some, yeah.
Yeah.
And a good landscape plan is gonna take all that into consideration.
Right.
Yeah, I, I could go either way. There's, like you said, there's points two, there's points against, there's points four, there's points not four, but.
I mean, the thing is, I, I would, this, I would just hate to have, see this in front of us every time for the plan, so I think that, that calling out some minimum requirement, if that makes you feel better.
Yeah.
It's fine, I mean.
Put a minimum in there, but then again, like you said, you see these lovely.
But then, but then their minimum might, you know, they come to you and all of a sudden the minimum is massive and you might say, well, okay, this looks great. You, you provided a really.
It gives the staff the ability to.
And when you say minimum, you mean minimum square foot of, you know, the.
The green space.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Cuz if they don't, yeah, they have, if they have twenty percent that has to be green space, where else are you gonna plant stuff, right?
Right.
So you're saying a minimum of that twenty percent?
Yeah.
Yep. In that twenty percent.
Within that twenty percent.
Yeah.
Because what, what else, would, where else would you plant?
Or your boulevard.
It really depends on, I mean, that's a maximum, so a lot of sites will have like maybe sixty percent impervious and they'll have forty percent green space. It really just depends on the site itself, it's, it's.
Well, that's why I said it's subjective to whatever comes in, right? I mean, maybe I'm that business and I'm gonna use all eighty percent and only twenty.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that any business that is interested in the park would appreciate that they're gonna have some conversation and be able to nego, you know, work with administration on it versus going, oh god, we have to have this and this.
Have seven thousand shrubs.
Because now that's kind of the question, it's, it's a, it's kind of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in trees.
Right.
Is
A lot.
A lot, and then you have no, you have a drought year, they half of them die, they gotta replace them within a year, I mean, that just,
Yeah.
It's a little, it's too much.
So what I'm hearing is maybe look at a blend of option three and four and bring back that language?
Yeah.
Okay.
And kind of like you get Sock Rapids where like you know it's this criteria is subject and determined by staff as well. You know what I mean, I mean, blend them, but.
Sounds good to me, that's all I got, okay.
All the trees.
Um, old business?
Old business, do we have old business?
Yeah, let's, uh, provide some updates here.
That was other business, I'm sorry, we have other business.
Or yeah, other business, you're right, sorry about that. Um, so the CUP for the wedding event venue off Jade Road, um, so the variance for that was approved on a three to two vote. Um, the CUP was approved with some modifications. Uh, so the modifications were, uh, changing the hours of operation. We had in there nine PM on Sunday through Thursday, they wa- wanted to change that to ten PM. Um, the language that we had to the, uh, outside amplified sound and speakers, they eliminated all of that language except the language that states that it should just meet the city noise ordinance. Um, and then they did recommend that within the development agreement, that we add language tied to a right turn lane as a future requirement, once thresholds are meet. So if you recall, there was different thresholds within the min dot manual that would trigger that. So, um, staff is working on that language, um, to add the right turn lane as a future requirement when it's needed, um. Any questions on, on that one?
The event? Um, there was the hours, operation hours, and we were specific, like we said, operate, operation of hours meant open to close, but in the follow-up, um, uh, from the city council, it said event hours. And
Hmm.
I'm like, well, that is subjective to how you look at it.
Your event.
Cuz now the event is, well, it goes to midnight, we close at one. That's what's changed, that wording had been changed from what we had talked about. Cuz we had, you had said, it's easiest just to make operation of hours plain and simple, and then when I, when you sent me the language, it said event hours. So.
Okay. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to recall now, I, um, I know that the discussion at the council, um, was geared kind of towards a little bit, what is the, you know, what's the intent of the hours, you know, and, you know, when we say operational hours, what, what are we meaning by that?
So that.
And I think that was part of, um, how that conversation started and then morphed from there a little bit. Um, and then they had decided, okay, well, let's, let's do ten PM, but I think they still understood that, like, okay, at ten PM, you know, the event is quote unquote, you know, over, but there's, we understand that there's gonna be people that, you know, may mingle past that, or there's gonna be.
So then that didn't really change anything from the original.
You know, after that, um, you know, cuz, I mean, we've all been to weddings where there's, you know, peop- a few people that will linger or things like that. Um, so I think that was kind of, some of the discussion was, you know, they recognized, you know, the, I guess, realistic, you know, way that that may, may operate, but.
Yeah, so it basically turned out to be what, the hours that was requested.
So not the holiday hours, so they, they only really changed cuz, uh, the applicant had holiday hours that were later.
Um, I didn't know anything about holiday hours.
Yeah, yeah, so it was part of the kind of, so they wanted holiday hours that were like outside of, you know, the other hours, but the council did not take action on that and grant that. They just changed the language to ten PM, Sunday through, uh, what was it?
Thursday.
Yeah, from the nine PM, yeah.
The weekend hours were what then?
Uh, same, it was six, to midnight, correct, yep, Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, but that's, that's, that's where, like I said, it changed to event hour, so. Friday, Saturday, but that's, that's, that's where, like I said, it changed the event hour, so it didn't really. It just went to their one AM, which is what they wanted, but.
Yeah, and I'll share copies of that, you know, adopted, uh, resolution. I'll send that to the PC to all of you.
That was gravel.
Yep, that was a three, two approving the variance. Yeah.
St. Joe likes gravel.
I mean, you know, Commissioner Mick, you know, when you brought up the point of the gravel and the ordinance and, you know, I mean, we have, since I've been here less than three years, we've received maybe three or four. And each time, I think the planning commission has recommended denial and then the council has approved that. You know, that may signal that, you know, should we look at the ordinance, you know? Yeah, it, it looks different in different spots though. You know, an industrial park looks different than a commercial area, which looks different than this, you know, rural residential but commercial use. You know, so each does really look different and should be evaluated as such as their own unique request. But just, I guess, food for thought.
Okay, well, if there's any, nothing else, right?
Um, so only other update is I wanted to work on some of that public art mural ordinance stuff, but just don't have capacity right now, so that is not, that did not come forward because of that, so.
Still working on that then?
Haven't really started past the, the five yard line.
Well, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Alright. All those, we're all in favor. Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye Cory.
Alright.
So when is this, hey, joint planning? I'll let you run and get him.